You.
Okay, so we are getting closer to be ready to start, so.
Yeah, just one thing, Alex, I think it says thirteen minutes, twenty seconds.
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna set the.
Oh, thank you, yeah.
Thank you, bro.
Glad you noticed.
Ready?
It's all Mark.
Yeah, okay, so then Devon explained like probably she will be a little late because a board meeting, but as soon as she gets free, she will join us, so.
All right, I'm going to open, open the floodgates, ready?
Okay, yeah, we are ready.
So Mr. Brown, is this gonna be the same format as the Mobile Home Alliance?
It's gonna be a similar format.
Okay.
Yeah.
But we've got, we've got a not quite slides for that.
And do you anticipate this going two and a half hours?
You know, I don't anticipate anything.
Yes, you do.
I am allergic to prognostication. I think it's gonna be like five hours.
Okay.
I want, it's an endurance test.
Yeah, exactly, just to begin with.
I think you'll be testing your own endurance at that point, my friend.
Because you know me, you've, you've seen me, what, two o'clock in the morning, council meetings.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, well, most of you see me there.
We don't have to, we don't, we don't go to two o'clock in the morning, come on.
Not, not, not anymore.
Not anymore.
Yeah, and that is a recent or it's just happened?
The latest one was three thirty and that was the RV ban.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, depends on the topic, huh?
We had the, the no pot chops in Mountain View one, that one went a while.
Yeah. So I'm, I believe you prefer no be until three AM, right? So anybody or somebody enjoyed that, I don't think so.
Not today.
I don't think the quality of decisions that are made at three AM are too good.
I agree.
We don't, we don't have any questions about that.
Are we, are we opening the doors, just to, just to do a quick time check?
Yeah, we have, we have ten people.
Beautiful.
In.
Okay.
They're, they're trickling in now.
So everybody agree, we start three more minutes, just give us some time to Devon.
Yeah, this is the war up time, so Maria, entertain the, the punters.
Okay, okay, I'm going to start dancing, so who wants to dance with me right now? Yeah, so what type of music would you like to, just to start dancing? Oh, I know, John already start, okay, that's good. Really, you, would you like to dance, you like to dance or no?
Let's dance.
No, not now, you're serious. So what, you like to dance?
Of course.
Who doesn't like to dance?
Okay.
A lot of people.
A lot of people, actually.
Yeah, that's true, and Emily, what type of music would you like for dance? Not now, but what is your favorite music to that, for dancing?
You know, since probably I'm a millennial, let's go with nineties R and B.
Yeah, millennials.
Okay, 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 I don't recognize only my, my son and well, that's another thing, so he does, he doesn't like to dance a lot. Chris, what is your favorite music for dancing?
Well, it's better for everyone if I don't dance, I don't do things I'm not good at. But probably showing my age, mid, mid two thousands pop music, that was a good era.
Favorite, favorite boy band of the nineties, late nineties, early two thousands.
Oh, there were so many.
Uh huh.
Oh, that's good.
Max is back.
Bastri is back, okay?
It's okay, we can wait.
Okay.
Okay, just to make, to make sure we're heard for everyone, Eric say something?
Hello.
Nicholas say something?
The best dancing takes place when Los Ornaderos are the band, that's a phenomenal band.
I think that.
Los Ornaderos?
Los Ornaderos, yeah.
Del Norte, Nicolas?
Sí, es una banda fantástica.
Wow, that's so sure, remember when we were in the CB Plaza, right, and our big celebration?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, yeah.
That was the dancing right there.
Yeah, yeah, and, and they are better now, they are practicing more, and yeah, they are really professionals, I really like that.
Oh, wow.
So give me one second, Alex, if, yeah, Alberto is here, could you please just add to the baron, like everybody?
Yep.
As a panelist, okay, thank you, okay, what about you, Eric? We have one minute.
Uh, me gusta la salsa.
Salsa, that's good, I like that salsa, this is very good, Aida Rose?
Oh, if it's gotta beat, I'll dance, but I think let's do some throwback to the eighties.
Okay.
Club music.
Yeah, I agree with that, this is very good, yes. Uh, okay, so John, what is your favorite music for dancing?
You're, John, you're muted. Classic.
Aida Rose, we're gonna go one better, we're going back to the seventies. The golden ages of rock and roll.
Yeah.
Classic rock, alright.
Absolutely, all that's good, Pat?
Rock and roll from the sixties and seventies.
Okay.
Got a really good beat, it's fun.
Yeah, Nicolas, you're the last one.
Um, I like reggaeton, which is a little bit on the two thousands, two thousand and ten side.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, well, interesting, so we have a diversity here and looks like all of you enjoy music, that is very good thing to enjoy. So are we ready to start?
Do we have any idea when Devon is coming here? We know that he's coming, that, that is coming late, but.
It is, it is up to the Mountain View Wisman School District Board as to how long they go. Also, if anyone wants to list their favorite music, the chat is open.
Oh, okay, thank you. Uh, yeah, I think we should start just to honor other candidates' time and then we, we for her when she arrives and see how we can handle when times come, what do you think?
Let's, let's do it, everyone except for Maria, please mute.
Oh, okay. Okay, so and Luis, are you awake?
Yes, I am.
Okay, good, okay, well, buenas tardes, soy María Marroquín, directora ejecutiva de the day worker center de Mountain View. Ay junto con la coalición de inquilinos nos da mucho gusto presentar este foro de candidatos enfocado en temas cruciales como la vivienda. Gracias a todos por estar aquí.
Good afternoon, I am María Marroquín, executive director of the day worker center in Mountain View. Today, in collaboration with the Mountain View tenants coalition, we are hosting this candidates forum focused on crucial issues like housing, thank you all for being here.
Bienvenidos a todos los candidatos y a la audiencia, apreciamos su compromiso con los temas que nos importan. Lamentablemente el candidato José Gutiérrez no pudo asistir hoy debido a responsabilidades laborales y como ven, Devon va a estar un poquito tarde también por responsabilidades del mismo tipo.
Welcome to all the candidates and the audience, we appreciate your commitment to the issues that matter to us. Unfortunately, candidate José Gutiérrez could not attend today due to work responsibilities. And the same is with candidate Devon Clooney, who's running a little bit late, do the same thing.
Antes de comenzar, me gustaría agradecer a Alex Brown and Mark Beckman-Hartley por el apoyo técnico. Gracias también al comité ejecutivo de la coalición de inquilinos de Mountain View por contribuir con la elaboración de las preguntas. Y a Luis, a Luis de la Concha, mi compañero, por ayudar con la traducción del foro.
Before we begin, I would like to thank Alex Brown and Max Beckenhart, the technical support. Thanks also to the executive committee of the Mountain View tenants coalition for helping create these questions, and to Luis de la Concha for assisting with the forum's translation.
Ahora me gustaría explicar brevemente cómo se desarrollará el foro esta noche.
Now, I would like to briefly explain how tonight's forum will proceed.
Las seis preguntas están diseñadas con un enfoque especial en las políticas de vivienda para personas y planear abordar las necesidades de los residentes con ingresos bajos y extremadamente bajos.
The six questions are designed with a special focus on housing policies and how the candidates plan to address the needs of the low and extremely low income residents.
El orden de las respuestas de los candidatos será seleccionado de manera fortuita. Cada candidato tendrá un tiempo total de quince minutos para responder a todas las preguntas, dejando a su discreción cuánto tiempo utilizan para su presentación y para cada pregunta individualmente.
The order in which the candidates will respond will be selected randomly. Each candidate will have a total of fifteen minutes to answer all the questions, and they may decide how to distribute their time between their presentation and answering each question.
Este foro será grabado y posteriormente se hará disponible en el canal de YouTube del Day Worker Center. Para aquellos que no pudieron asistir, tengan acceso a este evento.
This forum will be recorded and made available later on the Day Worker Center in Mountain View website for those who could not attend.
Les pedimos a todos que mantengan un ambiente respetuoso tanto para los candidatos como para los demás participantes en el foro. Nuestro objetivo es fomentar una discusión constructiva y enfocada en las soluciones para nuestra comunidad.
We ask everyone to maintain a respectful atmosphere for both the candidates and the other participants in this forum. Our goal is to foster constructive discussion, focus on solutions for our community.
Instrucciones para la traducción para los hablantes de español. En, en la barra inferior de la pantalla hay un globo terráqueo que es para interpretación. Por favor, oprima ahí y selecciona el español.
Translation instructions for English speakers, on the Zoom toolbar, click on the interpretation icon and select English.
Si tienen problemas técnicos, por favor, escríbanos en el chat para pedir ayuda.
If you have any technical issues, please contact us via chat for assistance.
A partir de este momento, Luis y yo nos pasaremos a los canales de traducción, él estará traduciendo al inglés y yo al español. Uh, por favor, concédanos un, un momentito para hacer la transición. Y mientras tanto, los dejo con mi compañero Marco Cedillo, miembro de la coalición de inquilinos de Mountain View, como también del Day Worker Center de Mountain.
At this point, Luis and I will assist the translation channels. I now leave you with my colleague Marco Cedillo, a member of Mountain View Tenants Coalition and the Day Worker Center in Mountain View. Please allow one minute for transition.
And then, just to note, for all the attendees, unless you are fully bilingual, if you speak English only, you will need to switch to the English channel, because a lot of the main questions and everything will be in Spanish, and so the translations will be in the channel for English, which is available now.
Where is that?
Should be the bottom, bottom of your screen?
Where, on the far right?
Usually.
You should be able to click on more and then interpretation at the top.
And then, okay.
Deberían poder hacer clic en más or more y buscar interpretación encima de la lista.
So I would wanna put English for mine?
Unless you speak Spanish, yes.
No, I, just, okay, thank you.
Okay. Hola, buenas tardes, mi nombre es Marco Antonio y quiero pedirle a los candidatos, primero, antes que nada, agradecerles su presencia y pedirles que cada uno haga una breve introducción individual, recordándoles que tienen quince minutos de tiempo total para responder las seis preguntas, nuevamente, bienvenidos.
Pat, wanna kick us off?
Yeah.
Sure, hello, everybody, my name is Pat Showalter. I am currently the mayor of Mountain View and I've served on the Mountain View City Council for eight years. I'm known as a champion for housing and the environment and for equity. I'm really delighted to be here today to talk with the day workers and the Mountain View Tenants Alliance, and I appreciate you putting this together. Um, for over twenty-five years, the Day Worker Center has been a trusted and valuable institution in our community. And I've really been impressed by the range of programs that you have and how you have evolved to meet the needs of the community. So I'm really looking forward to this conversation, thank you.
All right, I'll go next. Hi, everyone, my name is Emily Ann Ramos and I have been on your city council for a little under two years. And in that time, we have worked with the community to pass a strong housing element, leading to our pro-housing designation, the only one in the county. Uh, we distributed ARPA funds for workforce development and worked on a number of strategies like the economic development strategy and the shoreline wildlife strategy. Prior to being on council, I spent six years on the rental housing committee, where we worked on implementing the newly adopted rent stabilization law to prevent displacement of our families. Uh, in my day job at SB at Home, a housing advocacy organization, I work on housing policy that centers on educating, building, and empowering our communities. Um, I'm honored to be here, so I'm looking forward to all the questions, thank you so much.
I guess I'm up next, well, good evening, everyone, I'm sorry. Good evening, everyone, I'm Aida Rose Sylvester and I'm happy to be here tonight, thank you to our hosts for putting this on and taking the time. I've been a leader on two of our city advisory bodies, the Human Relations Commission and the Environmental Sustainability Task Force. I'm a leader in my neighborhood and I'm a Mountain View mediator where I regularly take on cases involving tenant and landlord disputes. And I sit on the boards of several nonprofits, including our leading safety net organizations, CSA, and other important organizations in our community. I am well-known for standing up for everyone in my community. I built an organization called Together You Will that united thousands of community members to stand up for progressive values starting in two thousand seventeen. You may have seen our rallies that often had three thousand people supporting DACA, immigrants, and the reunification of families. On the Human Relations Commission, I led a long, multi-year study of the history of housing discrimination, led difficult discussions on community policing, and worked to get the stories of our unstablely housed residents heard. Some of that work around safe parking actually led to the county supporting funding for our safe parking sites. Uh, it's an honor to be here tonight, and I turn it over to the next person.
Sorry, just communicating in the chat that we can't hear Maria if she has something to say, but when she raises her hand and you see it'll slow down. Slow down. Okay.
Thank you, Alex.
Saludos a todos, me llamo Nicolás Hargi y estoy orgulloso para ser su candidato para el concejo municipal de Mountain View. Muchas gracias al centro de ornaleros de Mountain View y la coalición de inquilinos por tener este foro esta tarde. Yo quiero compartir que yo fui a Saint Francis High School aquí en Mountain View y mi mamá es de Venezuela, entonces la experiencia de inmigrantes es muy importante para mí. Yo sé que en Mountain View nuestra diversidad es una fuerza positiva y yo quiero continuar a desarrollar nuestra diversidad con el programa multicultural y eventos que nos traen juntos y nos unen. Yo también creo que el consejo tiene una obligación para combatir el costo alto de vivir, por promover viviendas asequibles y también fortalecer nuestro, nuestra fuerza laboral. Creo que tenemos que enfocarnos en el bienestar comunitario y darnos cuenta que el bienestar del vecino es el bienestar nuestro. Unas prioridades mías en este tema incluyen la seguridad pública y estoy muy emocionado poder, poder hablar con ustedes. Para emparejarme con los otros candidatos, yo voy a hablar en inglés de aquí en adelante, gracias.
Hi, I'm John McAllister, I'm a local businessman, you may know me from owning the Baskin Robbins on El Camino. And I could not do that without the workforce, that's the diversity of the workforce in Mountain View that I totally support. I have four of my work, workers live in subsidized housing, so I know how important it is to have housing to bring that workforce in. I appreciate everybody that comes through the door and it's, it's been a pleasure, because I see so many people, so many diverse populations coming through that I get to interact with them all, and I know how important they are to the city of Mountain View. I look forward to this forum and talk and listen to what's going on. I, in two thousand and fifteen, I was the mayor, so to give you some of my accomplishments, I started the safe parking program. And I think I'm the only one that has a definitive housing solution. And we'll get into that as we progress, but we're, the city runs a bond and we buy housing and convert that and have complete control of the housing so that we can help a diverse group of people from rapid rehousing to long-term housing, to taking care of our workforce, taking care of our teachers. And I think it's a program that we need to do and we need to be bold, so thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and share my ideas.
Thank you, sir. Buenas noches a todos, mi nombre es Eric Boicón y me postulo para el consejo de la ciudad de Mountain View, porque creo que ninguna familia trabajadora, ninguna madre soltera y ningún niño debería temer ser despacado en la ciudad que han aprendido a amar. Criado por una madre soltera, sé lo que es luchar solo para mantener un techo sobre la cabeza y por eso he dedicado mi vida a luchar para familias como la mía. Durante la pandemia, serví a Mountain View como líder del equipo de ayuda para personas positivas de COVID-19 en la Agencia de Servicios Comunitarios, asegurando que las familias no solo tuvieran comida, sino también se mantuvieran en sus hogares al ofrecerles asistencia para el pago de alquiler. También asumió la lucha contra la desinformación para asegurar que nuestra comunidad fuera contada durante el censo del 2020. También fui despachador y respondedor de la red de respetar rápida. Una de mis metas es trabajar con los grupos de interés de la comunidad para encontrar soluciones a nuestro creciente problema de vivienda y crear oportunidades para residentes y trabajadores de todos los niveles de ingresos para que vivan y disfrutan en Mountain View. Ahora como, como, como miembro, commissionado de la Comisión de Relaciones Humanas, sigo trabajando para elevar las voces de nuestros residentes. Es por eso que mi campaña cuenta con el respaldo del Partido Demócata, el Consejo Laboral del Sur de la Bahía y como la exalta, de esa de sale libre, ojalá que pueda contar con su apoyo este cinco de noviembre.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Chris Clark. I have been involved in Mountain View for about fifteen years now. I started on the Human Relations Commission and then the Punting Commission and then served eight years on council, including the term as vice mayor and mayor. Um, I'm currently back on the Punting Commission where I recently worked on our housing element and trying to move our, our, our housing plans forward to build additional affordable housing. Um, also, for my day job, I helped run a nonprofit that just conducted the largest guaranteed income study in the United States, so that's something that I have a particular interest in and look forward to the, to your questions tonight and getting to know everyone and hopefully earning your support again this year.
Okay. Voy a empezar, sí. Mountain View forma parte de la crisis de vivienda en el área de la bahía, donde los costos de vivienda se han disparado en la última década. La brecha entre los salarios y los precios de las viviendas ha crecido significativamente, impactando particularmente a los residentes con ingresos extremadamente bajos. Muchas familias e individuos se ven obligados a gastar una porción insostenible de sus ingresos en vivienda, dejando poco para otras necesidades. Para aquellos que ganan el treinta por ciento o menos del ingreso medio del área, cuarenta y seis mil dólares, encontrar una vivienda que se ajuste a su presupuesto se ha vuelto casi imposible. Esta disparidad destaca la escasez crítica de unidades de vivienda asequible disponibles para los residentes más vulnerables. ¿Cuál cree usted que es la causa principal de la crisis de vivienda en Mountain View?
What's the primary cause of the housing? One is the demand for housing close to employers. We have major employers in Google and Intuit, LinkedIn, and so people like to stick around and live closer to home. One of the other crises is we're not developing low-income housing or subsidized housing. We continually try to get grants and build on that instead of being proactive and actually acquiring the properties so that we have control on them. And that's my pro idea is that Mountain View buys, when apartments come up for sale, the city buys them, and then we have complete control over what happens. We would use a bond money and then we paid back the bond using the rentals. Now, once we own the properties and we have complete control, then we can decide what population needs to go there. And the, right now, what the city's doing is that we get a grant and then we wait years. This way, we have complete control, and sometimes when you get a grant, there's conditions involved in it that you have to select a certain population. With my program, the city owns a hundred percent of the apartments, and therefore, we can decide who stays there, what the rent's gonna be, and have a better idea of the like, taking care of the advantages of people that live in Mountain View. And that's why one of my campaigns is residents first. And then as this program develops and goes along, we'd make it in the long term, we possibly could make the, have those apartments converted into condos, which then will help the young population that wants to have the first-time ownership. And if that's not another incident, I think in the long run, if we own the apartment complexes, it will be cheaper for the city of Mountain View than to continually putting money back in for temporary housing. Where here, we will have permanent housing and we know the control of it. I think the housing will also be in a better condition because we will maintain it, whereas some landlords are not as interested in maintaining the properties. And also, if this doesn't work quite like we thought it would, we can always sell the properties. But I think we need to be proactive, I was, been on the council since two thousand and twelve, and they always keep talking about, well, we put in thousands of units, but we only got about three or four affordable housing. We need to be aggressive, we need to take a proactive approach, and the city needs to buy these apartments. And that will help solve the, of the housing crisis because of the other demands for other projects in the city, thank you.
Thank you, I think there are three key reasons, and one is certainly the lack of a diversity of housing types in our city. Uh, we need more truly affordable housing units. Uh, and like the projects that are going in on San Antonio where the gas station was, a hundred percent affordable units. Uh, so we need to attract and encourage more projects like that and not chase them away with unnecessary demands on, on what they need to be. We also need more housing for the missing middle, middle income and including ownership housing to help increase the diversity of housing stock. Uh, but with that said, if we get a chance to look at Costa Hawkins, if Prop thirty-three passes, we should look at rent control and expanding the years that units are covered to make more units affordable under rent control. And lastly, to the underlying problem, I think we need to make. to make universal basic income permanent. And I think we need more workforce development to help people find financial security in our community.
Gracias por la pregunta. Yo pienso que la principal causa de la crisis de vivienda es que no hay suficiente casas asequibles, especialmente para familias con ingresos muy bajos. Los precios suben porque hay mucha demanda y pocas casas disponibles. Y también las políticas de sonificación, la especulación y la falta de inversión de vivienda pública empeoran la situación. Por ejemplo, puedes ver en la página web de la ciudad para apartamentos de bajos ingresos que aunque sean para ingresos de menos de 30%, todavía cuestan como 2.300 para un cuarto. O estamos viendo que es bien caro para poder vivir acá. Por eso yo pienso para resolverlo, necesitamos construir más viviendas asequibles, proteger a los inquilinos y ofrecer más apoyo a familias de bajos ingresos. Asegurarnos que por solo por ese aumento no sean despasados y tratar de encontrar formas, especialmente no poner leyes que pueden desplacer muchos de los residentes como antes concejales en el pasado han tratado de hacer. Es asegurarnos que vamos a proteger a todos, no solo los que hagan buen ingreso.
My turn. I believe that the housing crisis is primarily caused by a shortage of housing at all levels of affordability. And that is over a long period of time. So as we fix the housing crisis, or do our best to alleviate the pains of housing crisis, I look at the three Ps. Produce housing at all levels of affordability. Preserve affordable housing and protect tenants. And to go more into the development of more housing, we need more than just market rate. We'll need a mix of market and affordable. And we should also expand on the different models of affordable housing. And this is something we will be looking at in our Community Ownership Action Plan coming up on council. And it will also cover things like acquisition, as former Mayor McAllister had mentioned. But it will also include looking at different models such as community land trusts, community development corporations, and limited equity co-ops. So we are going to do a bunch of solutions because it was a bunch of issues that led to this housing crisis so that we could protect our families. So thank you.
This housing crisis has been something that I've heard about since I was on the Planning Commission in the 90s. And the problem then, and the problem now even worse though, I think, is that we aren't building enough housing quickly enough. It's not just a Mountain View problem, it's a regional problem. But we need to do our part. And we have been recognized for doing our part because we've been designated as a pro housing community, the only one in Santa Clara County. But still, like was said, we have a shortage of housing at all income points. And the problem of affordable housing is particularly acute. During the time I've been on council, we've built 4,000 new housing units. But 651 of them are affordable. So, and there's many, many more people that need those affordable housing than just that percentage. So I think that I'm sort of a basket of tools kind of person. I don't think there is a single silver bullet to solve this problem. I think we need to build affordable housing. We need to preserve our housing. And certainly buying some apartment houses might be a good way to go. We need to protect our tenants. We have established a good rent control program that's working and we added mobile homes to it recently, which is good. And we need to always be looking on how to improve our displacement ordinance. So those are some things, but it's a basket of problems. It's not, I mean, a basket of solutions. It's not a silver bullet.
To join the other candidates, I'm going to start speaking in English. I think that part of the housing crisis has to do with the size of the city of Mountain View. Mountain View is a relatively small city compared to cities like Santa Clara and Sunnyvale that have a lot more land to work with. The housing crisis is also partially caused by history. Starting in 1995 or the 90s, you know, as the technology industry exploded, we let the housing stock grow and we allowed market rate housing to take priority over affordable housing. So starting in, you know, 2010 or 2015 approximately, we started paying attention to the issue of displacement, which is when a building gets torn down and the people who live there have to leave. We need to continue down this route and focus on building more housing in the parts of the city that are currently zoned for single-family homes to allow for more apartments. We also need to change the definition of affordability. Because when the city thinks about affordable housing in the below-market-rate housing program, we are gearing our model towards people making 65% of area median income. But we're tonight talking about people that are making 30% or less of area median income. So we need to change the definition for what affordable really is. We also need to try to preserve the naturally existing apartment buildings that are affordable. Because we have some older buildings, they need to be renovated if people are going to continue living in them. And we need to strengthen our rent control laws and our displacement response strategy to keep people in their units.
Before I start, Maria, did you want to say something? You have your hand up.
Unfortunately, Maria, I can't say something in the English channel because she's Spanish, so.
Okay, so as others have mentioned, you know, the root cause really boils down to more people want to live in Mountain View than we have housing for, and that dries up the cost of housing unfortunately. Whether folks want to live here to be closer to their jobs or for the schools and the amenities. And we, as has been pointed out, we just have the 12 square miles. And the way that we have to approach that in terms of fixing it and making it more affordable for Mountain View is to, one, build more housing, which means we're going to have to go up because we're only 12 square miles. It means that we need additional housing at all affordability levels from market rate all the way to the most subsidized units that we can get or that we can build, protecting and preserving our naturally affordable housing stock and creating incentives to renovate it. And then finally, you know, I think we need to recognize, as Mountain View has, that this isn't just something that Mountain View can solve by itself. It's a regional issue. And the more that we focus on regional initiatives and working with other cities within the Bay Area and our neighbors and others to both fund affordable housing and build affordable housing, I think the greater impact that will have. Not that Mountain View shouldn't focus on Mountain View, but I think because we have so many cities and the lines are blurred here in the Bay Area, the more that we work with our neighbors and others to fund affordable housing and things like community land trusts and other things, the greater impact that will have. And I think we'll be better equipped to solve this issue in working with others than if we just approach it by ourselves.
Hola, mi nombre es María Altero y yo soy miembro de Mountain View Tennis Coalition. Las políticas actuales de Mountain View sobre vivienda asequible suelen centrarse en proporcionar unidades para hogares de ingresos moderados a bajos. Sin embargo, los residentes con ingresos extremadamente bajos a menudo se pasan por alto y están en riesgo de vivir en la calle ya que sus niveles de ingresos no alcanzan los umbrales de muchos programas de vivienda asequible. Además, existe una brecha de comunicación entre la comunidad y el gobierno local sobre cómo los desarrollos de vivienda afectan la asequibilidad. ¿Qué políticas propondría para garantizar que los nuevos desarrollos incluyan vivienda asequible para los residentes con ingresos extremadamente bajos en Mountain View?
So you've identified a key gap, I think, and a key challenge that we need to address. And one of the primary issues here is that we have housing for the extremely low income also requires the greatest subsidy from cities, municipalities, and the state. And so that's become especially challenging over the last few years. And it's an area that we really need to focus on. So I would say there are a couple of things that we can do. One is, as I mentioned earlier, because this requires so much additional subsidy and funding in order to address the need at the extremely low income level, we really need a regional measure or regional approach. And unfortunately, that got pulled from the ballot this year. But if we can create a large regional source of funds, like the BAFA measure, for example, then we'll be able to pump much, much more of those subsidies into addressing housing for extremely low-income residents in Mountain View. So I think, I know that's a little bit of a ways off, but I think that's really because of the amount of subsidy required, that's really one of the key ways that we can address this. Two is to pursue approaches that have a much lower cost of construction. And there are new technologies out there and new models that are being developed that I think that we should pursue. And that includes, you know, community land trusts and similar vehicles. And then third is really looking at expanding our guaranteed income programs, not just in Mountain View, but perhaps more broadly so that, you know, in the interim, folks have the additional support that they need in order to afford the rent until we're able to address, you know, building housing for the extremely low-income folks in Mountain View.
Thank you for the question. To start this out with, when we look at affordable housing, there are different levels of affordable housing. So the main levels of what we see is based on something called AMI, which is the annual median income. So on a medium level, most people in Mountain View make a certain amount and then they take a percentage of that to determine what is low income. So from 50 to 80% is what we consider low income. From 30 to 50% is what we call very low income or VLI. And then from 0 to 30% is extremely low income or ELI. And I believe what you're talking about is for VLI and ELI. And that just really needs us to focus on those deeper levels of affordability. We need to look at alternative affordable housing models because most of affordable housing is focused on that 50 to 80% because of the way they are funded through low-income tax credits, which is a massive amount of funding available for affordable housing that's shared by everyone in the country. And so what we want to do is we're looking at other ways of funding affordable housing, directly funding affordable housing. We have Measure G coming up on the ballot and that will provide some funding for affordable housing. And then we can use that to allow for, to pay for housing at deeper levels of affordability. When I talk about affordable, different affordable housing models, those usually don't rely on tax credit funding, but other forms of funding so that they can seek the deeper levels of affordability and come up with their own mechanisms to essentially break even. And those are the ways that we're probably going to have to do in order to get that necessary affordable housing for those on our lowest level income. All right, thank you.
So to address the extremely low-income housing needs, we are definitely going to have to partner with people who can help us create the unique housing and the unique funding models. There are nonprofit housing developers that we can work with, but we can also look at alternative models, which has been mentioned before, like the community land trust, being able to buy up different kinds of properties, including existing naturally affordable housing that may otherwise be demolished, hotels and other kinds of buildings, and looking for partnerships like a community land trust and other models that can get funding to help rehab and maintain those homes in perpetuity. And there's really interesting models evolving around housing accelerators. So organizations that go seek funding from various different levels and pull it together. Obviously, there's grant money and tax credit money, private foundation money. So it takes a lot of scrappy getting the money together, but there are models emerging that I think will make this work. I do want to address the second part of the question about understanding the gap in communication. I think it is important that the city spend some time understanding exactly how many extremely low-income houses are needed and at what types. Like how many people who are single versus with families? What type of housing do they actually need and what are the actual numbers? And communicate and partner with the community more on that. I think that's what the second part of the question was referring to. Thank you.
Well, one policy that, it may be a little late, is that when we had all these corporations coming and applying for building permits, we should have required them to put in the housing first instead of having them put in their office buildings and then decide to go ahead and do the housing. I mean, in fact, Google came along and said, oh, here's housing for you in North Bay Shore, but the 300-unit apartment, I think, are either in West Middlefield. We can't do, we can't afford. And so that is a mistake is that we need to hold our developers, the corporate ones, in the office complex. If they want their offices, then they need to build the housing and they need to build the housing for a workforce that's going to help take care of their employees. And as I say, there's a downside right now in development. And so it's not what we can usually go and ask for. A second thing, a lot of people are saying, well, we need to get partners, we need to do this. Mountain View does not build housing. Developers develop it. And there's reasons why they're not building right now is because the cost is too high of material, the financing's high. So that's where I'm going to repeat myself, where the city could be proactive and buy some of these older units. Some of these units could be to the point where we can get a fairly good price on it. And the people that have existing properties, they'll sell to us and then they could go develop something else. But the policy-wise, again, if all we do is collect these grants, you're looking at something that's going to be 10 years down, four or five years down the road. We need to be proactive. We need to take care of it. So summarize, if an office complex comes along and they're required to put in housing, make them put in the housing first and put the requirement in there. And the second is, I keep saying, buy the properties, then we have complete flexibility and control of what the rents are and how we can maintain and keep people in Mountain View.
As has been mentioned, one of the big problems is that when you're building housing that's affordable for extremely low-income people, there is a larger gap. You have to come up with more money than for building for very low-income or just low-income. And oftentimes, in cities... And oftentimes in city council, we've been faced with how many affordable units could be produced. And because of the financing, they could produce more units for higher, at higher affordability ranges. And so we went with that. That wasn't necessarily the right answer all the time, but that's kind of how this has happened. You can, you can put in more low, affordable low income than you can very low or very, very low. And so we went for more units so that more people could be housed. But we need to think of the whole range of people that need to be housed. And that's, that's something that I think we really haven't gotten our arms around. I've liked hearing all of the ideas that people have had here tonight. I think another one that's particularly valuable is the guaranteed basic income. You know, we, we know that when someone becomes homeless, that's very expensive in terms of the social cost. And so it makes perfect sense to me anyway that supporting their rental costs another way is actually much more effective for our community than, you know, than letting them become homeless. That's a travesty. We don't want that to happen. And guaranteed basic income helps a lot with that. But I really think that this is a very, very thorny problem. And I, I'm not going to say that I, I have the answer for it because we, we really, when it comes down to it, we are faced with the gap of where do we get those dollars that we need to build more units? And it's not a simple problem at all.
Oh, okay. I'm just going to take a quick moment for all my colleagues. If y'all can speak a little bit slower in English, that would be great, including myself. Okay. Voy a comenzar. So conforme las pólizas que yo quisiera ver implementadas en Mountain View, yo creo que como si tuviera la oportunidad de ser su concejal, es adoptar leyes como COPA o TOPA porque pienso que estas pólizas nos darían nosotros como inquilinos y organizaciones comunitarias la oportunidad de comprar estas propiedades y para asegurarnos que podemos mantener las viviendas asequibles y en manos de los residentes. También, yo estaría conforme a la expansión de las unidades de vivienda accessoria y eliminar las barreras que impiden su construcción. Esto nos permitirá que los residentes añaden unidades asequibles en sus terrenos, aumentando la oferta de vivienda a precios razonables. Por último, yo pienso que también conforme con la el community land trust que tenemos, es tratar de apoyarlas en toda manera que podamos. Hemos escuchado que mucho depende de lo financiero, pero es tratar conforme con nuestros colegas, tratar de buscar en qué manera podemos recargar esos fondos para poder apoyar estas pólizas para asegurarnos que aunque estamos también tratando de crear más unidades para nuestros residentes, es también proteger a los residentes de ser despasados. Y en fin, también es más bien dicho, yo sé que yo no tengo todas las ideas. Ustedes como una coalición han estado en la lucha por muchos años peleando para permanecer aquí y es de verdad manteniendo esa conversación con ustedes y qué podemos nosotros como concejal implementar para asegurarnos que ustedes sean protegidos y que nos toman en cuenta que nosotros queremos que ustedes permanezcan acá y necesitamos sus voces en ISOP. Gracias.
Thank you. My name is Devon Conley. I apologize for arriving late tonight. I'm on the Mountain View污污school board and we had a meeting this evening. My understanding is the question is about the type of housing that's being built in Mountain View. From the school perspective, I know that thirty-three percent of the students in our school district qualify for free and reduced price lunch, which means for a family of four that they earn fifty-five thousand, five hundred dollars or less. These families qualify for very low income housing. And as you've heard everyone talking about, that is some of the hardest housing to get built. Our housing element calls for over two thousand, seven hundred units of very low income housing. So we have made a promise to the state of California that we are going to build over two thousand, seven hundred of these units. But it's very, very challenging. They have to be heavily subsidized in some way. And as McAllister, John McAllister pointed out, the city doesn't actually build the properties themselves, it's developers who are building things. But we have seen some promising practices working with different affordable housing developers and some creative partnerships. On the school board, we are opening soon a workforce housing development that we have worked on with the city of Mountain View and the developer. And so the school district passed a bond that included paying for construction of this housing. It's going to have a hundred and twenty-three affordable units for people working within the school district. But the city contributed, their, their participation in this process was, one, to let the developer count our building as part of their affordable housing requirement. And then, two, they've contributed some funds to the parking that had to be built. But overall, it wasn't a very significant financial outlay to the city, from the city, but it was support and partnership in helping it happen. And so I think that's an example of one of the ways that we can work together as a city with other organizations, with affordable housing developers, and try to actually get this done. But there is a real urgency and I want to see these, these units that are so hard to build, I want to make sure that they're available for families, that we have two to three bedroom units. I was speaking with some parents within our community a few weeks ago who were talking to me about, you know, if you have a family of five, you might be able to get into a two bedroom affordable housing unit. But if you have six people in your family, you can't qualify for a two bedroom affordable housing unit. You have to do a three bedroom unit instead because there's a limit on how many people can be there. And it turns out that they didn't income qualify for the three bedroom unit because it was more expensive. So there's some problems in how we're qualifying people and getting them in as well that is really challenging.
I think that there's a gap in communication between not only the city and residents, but also the city and developers. Developers tell us that they can't build more affordable units because it's not profitable. However, if you look at the vacancy rates, the newest, most expensive apartments have the highest vacancy rates. They're ten or eleven percent. But if you look at the affordable apartments, the vacancy rates are approximately five percent. So we really have to be strict with developers if we're going to build the affordable housing that we need. I mentioned earlier the below market rate housing program. We define affordability as sixty-five percent of area median income. That's not affordable. We need to push that downwards in order to capture more of our, more of our community. And we also need to require that more units within a particular development are affordable. Right now, the requirement is that fifteen percent of units in a new building be affordable. We need to move that to at least twenty percent to start making progress. I agree that we should buy units. I think that it has, it gives us the opportunity to really make some progress. And we should fund that in partnership with the county of Santa Clara like we did over the last several years with Measure A. However, I don't think that the city should control the rent. I think we need to work with the residents and the community land trust to adjust to what our residents are seeing on the ground. For example, some people don't get paid once a month, they get paid once every two weeks. So making a rent check at the beginning of the month may not make sense for everyone. But if we work with our residents in a community land trust format, we can build a more flexible format to adjust to what our residents need.
Good evening, candidates. My name is Ángel Santuario and I'm a member of the Mountain View tenants coalition. Here's the situation. The Latino community represents a significant portion of Mountain View's population. It's eighteen point three percent according to the US Census American Community Survey. There is concern that many in this demographic, particularly those with lower incomes, lack accessible information about how housing decisions affect them. Yet there is often a disconnect between this community and the decision-making processes that shape housing development. Translation of documents and meetings is one step towards inclusion. But deeper issues such as accessibility, lack of direct outreach, and limited representation in decision-making bodies remain unaddressed. Many Latino residents are renters or live in overcrowded conditions, making their participation in housing policy discussions critical. However, logistical barriers such as language, meeting times, childcare, inaccessibility to needed technology, and the comprehension of terminology sometimes limit the participation of these community members in important discussions. The question is that, given these barriers, how will you ensure that the Latino community's opinions are included in housing development decisions?
Shall I start? All right, I'll just start. So this is a great question and it's something that we have been working on constantly. One of the things that we have been blessed with here in Mountain View is a very strong activist core of our city. This is the same group, that's the group that's hosting our forum right now, is the group that brought us our rent control law through a ballot initiative, which was something that was incredibly, was an incredible feat to accomplish. Especially in that year, we weren't the only city that was taking on rent stabilization, but we were one of the few cities that succeeded out of the many cities that attempted it. So one is to rely on the grassroots organizers in these communities, primarily the Latino community and, and the renter community to, to make our way through that. But not just that, it's a great start. One of the programs our city started a little before the pandemic was the Spanish Leadership Academy. And also they grown to create a Chinese Leadership Academy as well. And it's commonly referred to under many of the communities academia. And that is something to build the connections with leadership in your communities, in the Latino communities, in the neighborhoods. And I think along with the programs that we already have in the city, we, we would connect those groups with many programs like our neighborhood grant programs, like our, our outreach with our rent, rent stabilization and housing departments. And also maybe look into what we call a promotoris program. And this is something that's in San Jose, where they actually give some stipends to facilitate in the outreach by the community for the community. Those are things that we may want to look into in the future as we expand outreach. One thing I also want us to think about when it comes to the representation, we need to look at the possibility of having a monolingual, non-English speaker as in leadership positions, things like our different commissions. The city of Richmond recently added a Spanish-speaking, monolingual Spanish speaker on their rental, on their rent board. And it did change on how they were going to do their outreach and ensure that the entire meeting was allowed to be multilingual. Thank you so much.
So that's a hard act to follow. Councilmember Ramos covered a lot of, a lot of the key items there. So one is, as she pointed out, we, in my, I think the last year or two of my prior council term, we, we launched the Spanish Language Civic Leadership Academy, which I think has been quite successful. The current council has, and give them full credit, they've made great strides in investing more in translation services and producing additional materials in multiple languages. But I think there's, there's still more to do. So one would be, you know, certainly working through our, our community organizers and, and the folks in, in each community that, that, that have built a high level of trust in ensuring that we're disseminating as much information as possible and working with them, especially in some of these trickier issues like housing. I think one, one thing we can do is have additional community meetings and meeting folks where they're at as opposed to at more convenient times and locations as opposed to just having folks always come to City Hall most of the time. And then I think, as Councilmember Ramos touched on, another key thing is, when I started on Human Relations Commission or Planning Commission, our commissions and our council looked very different than they do today. I was the youngest person ever elected. We didn't have a renter on council at the time. And, and we didn't have frankly, a lot of diversity on the council and some of our commissions. And I think one of the great strides that Mountain View has made over the last ten years or so is to ensure that our advisory bodies, our commissions, our committee and our council look, reflects, better reflect the diversity of our community. And that is one of the, the key things that I think gets to the heart of how we ensure that our, the diversity within Mountain View is represented at all decision-making levels is ensuring that we're continuing to, to appoint folks to the advisory bodies and elsewhere that reflect the diversity in Mountain View, both, both in, in background, but also in in their, their viewpoints and their, and their lived experiences.
So what I've learned, you know, from the school district perspective, especially as a parent at Miss Strahl, where my older child attended for six years the dual immersion Spanish speaking program in the district, is that we have a thriving leadership community within our Spanish speaking community here in Mountain View. There are such incredible leaders already in our Spanish speaking community. And we have an ecosystem of community-based organizations as well as activist organizations who are doing their, this work. But I think what we need to do is formalize some of our protocols at the city level to make sure we are following the same steps of outreach and inclusion every time it comes to important decision-making. The city has talked about bringing an equity lens to their decision-making, and there's been some progress on that, but I think we can do more. Because when we talk about translation, for example, and having childcare available for families so they can attend meetings, that is a commitment to our shared values about our community that we're going to make it possible for everyone to participate. So we should be translating all of our communications, we should be translating all of our meetings. This is something the school district does by second nature. We know this, this is our practice. And it means that the school district is a trusted kind of resource for community members to learn about other things. The city hasn't quite bridged that role yet. But reaching out to groups like the Day Worker Center, to the Solidarity Fund, to the Community Action Team, to Reach Potential Silicon Valley, which used to be Reach Potential Movement, to Cafecito. Like there, there are so many avenues for the city to interact with and, and learn from our Spanish speaking community. And then we need to be recruiting, actively recruiting people from those organizations and from our Spanish speaking community to serve in these leadership roles. I didn't apply to be appointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission until somebody said to me, hey, I think you'd be really good at this. You should step up and try it, right? We needed to be actively out there encouraging people to participate and bringing them to the table.
I think a key group in accessibility for non-English speakers is our kids. In so many cases, we depend on our young people to do translation for us and to help us understand. In so many cases, we depend on our young people to do translation for us and to help us understand what's going on. That's why I think that the city needs to strengthen our relationship with our schools by sending our planning documents and our city webpages to the schools so that kids can learn about what's going on and then can talk about it at home with the family. I'm also very focused on translation. Uh, the housing element, which will guide our housing development for the next eight years, only the introduction was translated into Spanish. It's a three hundred-page document. Only forty pages were translated. Translation in the grand scheme of things is a very affordable thing to do. We need to invest in our multicultural engagement program and potentially look for contractors if we can't do all of the translation work ourselves. I also think that we should partner with impactful community organizations that will be able to help get the word out in the community. I really look at churches as one of the most important parts of the city of Mountain View. We can have affordable housing conversations, uh, aftermath, and that will help us get the word out there. I think we also need to, uh, work with neighborhoods and have, uh, representatives who speak Spanish or other languages on our rental housing commission, and at the end of the day on city council. I'm proud that I speak Spanish as my first language and I read and write Spanish as well. So I'm trying to elevate Latino leaders at all times.
You know, people mentioned a lot of great things that we're currently doing right now. And what we need to do to sort of supplement that is I think we need to do more outreach. Now, it was mentioned the churches where there's naturally a leadership there. There was mentioned schools where these people congregate and where Latinos congregate, and it would be easy to have a forum or a meeting place right after school or during school. They drop off the kids and we can get their feedback. Uh, where, uh, people eat is another place that you could organize and go outreach and say, hey, this is what we could do and get the, the business community, Latino business community involved because they also need workforce housing for their people, and so they would like to be participating in it. Um, grocery stores, Latino grocery stores, go there. There's, these are people shopping, and they're always, you know, take the time to be outreach. Have an individual from the city of Mountain View out there. We're talking to the people. And CSA is another big one that people talked about. They're in the community. They're helping the most valuable, and they would have a great resource to do it. So we have a lot of things going on and everybody says we got to do this and this. Just get proactive, get the, get our outreach programs in there, collect the data. And then, yes, if you need to recruit some people, there's opportunities. We just had a meeting of a celebrate, uh, service celebrates, celebration of service, where all these committees got together and all the committees are looking for people to join, and they're not, and it's, it's an excellent opportunity to become part of the solution, not part of the problem, and be involved. Yeah, you might have a little trouble with the language. You may have a little trouble merging, you know, but these are the first steps that will get us there to hear the Latino community and their opinions and housing decisions. And then we start building that building block and it will grow, and as more people feel comfortable with it, more hopefully will come forward.
Boy, we've heard some really great answers and ideas for this, and, um, so I'm gonna add just a few. One is, uh, we've talked about the advisory boards. I thought it was really important to make sure that we had a broad swath of the community on our advisory boards. And so, um, I've, uh, I've invited all of the applicants in the last three years, last four years since I've been on council again, to, um, to meet with me before the very, very short, usually five-minute interviews that we have because it's, it's, it's really hard to tell in a five-minute interview where somebody stands on something and get a, get a feel for their personality. So I found that meeting with people beforehand was very helpful, so I'm going to continue to do that. Um, and I have been able to get, um, people from different cultures to, to step up, um, by that personal encouragement, and that's good. I mean, like we have Guadalupe on the, the, um, the rental housing committee. We, um, and, and we have much, um, we have a gender, gender, uh, representation, um, on, uh, the, uh, the, um, PSAB. So I think those things are, you know, those things are important to have the gay, uh, the gay, um, the gay community representative. So, um, that's, that's something. And then I, I think another thing is to listen to what our ecosystem of community action, um, and, and, uh, organizations think would be helpful. I mean, it's one thing for us to say, well, we should do this, this, and this, but I also think we should be asking, um, what would be the most helpful, and, and then following from that. Thank you.
I love this question and I, I thank you for asking it. Um, whatever one says is true. We need to translate absolutely all of our materials, including everything on our website, all of our meeting documents, all of our presentations, and all of our meetings need to be multilingual. I mean, hard stop, we shouldn't be picking and choosing. Um, with that said though, I think there are some significant structural burdens that we aren't really addressing. One, we need childcare at public meetings so that people can attend the meetings as a participant or as a leader on an advisory body or on city council. Uh, we need to make all of our meetings, um, hybrid. Most of our city advisory body meetings are in, on person, in-person only, which is really restrictive for people who are rushing from work or who are trying to cook dinner or take care of kids during a meeting. Um, we've not been able to crack that as an advisory body for HRC yet, and it's something we really want to see. There's no reason people can't participate, um, as a leader in a hybrid fashion. Um, I don't know how we do it, but we need to look at the time that we hold meetings and how to include people who are still at work or have other obligations in the evening, like at six thirty. How do we make sure those voices get to be leaders and be heard? Um, and we also need to, as everyone said, keep recruiting excellent members to advisory bodies into city council. I'm happy that on the HRC, I actually recruited Eric, uh, to join us and have continued to recruit for diversity, uh, for years and really proud of the work that I've done there. Um, but lastly, I think an overlooked, uh, position that council gets to do is have one-on-one meetings with the community. I think it's really important that the, uh, council members go out and meet members of the community and build one-on-one relationships and really strengthen them and hear their voices and make sure that they are feeling, it feeling included and are included in decision-making processes and getting leadership opportunity.
Gracias por la pregunta. Um, en parte ustedes, como nosotros, como la comunidad latina tenemos el poder de decidir qué, qué tipo de liderazgo vamos a tener y conforme eso, qué, qué pólizas van a pasar. O sea, ahorita tenemos en el concejal una persona que habla español y otra persona que es latina pero está bien integrada. Y aunque no hable español, está bien integrado en la comunidad. Los dos están. Pero por mí mismo y lo que yo pienso es, en verdad he trabajado con el servicios de, de, de la comunidad y yo fui la razón porque muchos de los documentos que estamos, que tenemos allá para, ah, las aplicaciones están trasladados en español, en ruso, en chino. Porque sabemos que si las personas no tienen acceso a, a esos recursos van a pensar que nadie los va a querer en este área, y eso es no cierto. Ah, so tenemos que garantizar que todos los documentos y comunicaciones al gobiernos locales sean traducidos en una manera eficiente en español de modo que los residentes latinos tengan acceso a la misma información que los demás. Además, es crucial establecer horarios de reuniones que sean más aceptibles para los trabajadores y familias latinas. Sabemos que muchos de nosotros trabajamos muy, muy tarde en la noche y tenemos que descansar bien temprano. No nos da chance para ir a estas juntas, y lo opuesto es cierto también. Um, por eso también impulsaría programas de cuidado infantil, para las madres también, madres solteras. Ah, por la mayor parte son las que más vienen a estas juntas, ah, durante estas reuniones para que no, el, para poder eliminar ese obstáculo más común es para que todas esas familias pueden participar. Además, pienso como todos estaban diciendo, ampliaría el alcance directo de nuestra ciudad a través de los embajadores comunitarios que hablan español. También es tratar de hablar con nuestros denuncios y a ver si ellos también nos hacen el favor de, ah, promover esta información en sus hogares también. Todos estamos impactados por eso. Pero pienso que conforme que nosotros podemos estar alineados en lo que está pasando en la ciudad y estamos haciendo todo conforme un horario que nos beneficia a todos, podemos, ah, activamente involucrar a todos en las decisiones que impactan a todos, especialmente la comunidad latina.
All right. Thank you. Um, my name is Mark Adams and I am a member of the Mountain View Tenants Coalition. Now, as was, uh, mentioned earlier, the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority, or BAFFA bond, was expected to generate significant funds for affordable housing across the region. However, the absence of this funding has left many cities, including Mountain View, struggling to meet the growing demand for affordable housing. Now, we know that in recent months, the city council, uh, outlined a plan to generate twenty million dollars, uh, to build fifty additional affordable housing units, a, a figure that still wouldn't meet the present demand. But now, even with the potential passage of Measure G, a tax that would raise an estimated nine point five million dollars, it's unclear how the city reaches its twenty million dollar goal, let alone how it ensures any of these units built are actually affordable to the city's lowest-income residents. So my question, how do you plan to secure the funding to create enough affordable housing for low and extremely low-income residents to meet this growing demand? Thank you.
I'm going back to a simple answer. Get a bond. Get the money you need to build and pay it back with the rents that come about. That way, we have control of who goes in and what is transpires down. So get a bond that we generate, we pay for, and we control. Now, the housing, we can always turn it over to a nonprofit housing organization so that it sort of separates the city from doing that, but that's my answer. We do our own bond and we pay it back through the rents.
So, um, I'm just gonna, uh, start with the fifty units that was mentioned in the previous slide. Those are fifty units, uh, as part of the Community Ownership Action Plan. We actually have more, uh, affordable housing in the pipeline, but this, these fifty units that we're, we're, we're going to try to leverage twenty million dollars for is part of, uh, us exploring those alternative affordable housing models like community land trusts, limited equity co-ops, and community development corporations. Uh, that being said, the delay in the BAFFA bond, it was a really big setback in affordable housing. And it's just something, we just have to keep going and hope that we can bring that on back. In the meantime, as you mentioned, we have Measure G, which I recommend everyone to vote for so that we could have some funding, and we will take that funding, leverage it with federal and state funds. And this actually is another point I do want to make. Not just your local elections will be very important to this, but the national election will also be very important because the, um, the, our, our, the way we, the tax, uh, program that is currently in place will be expiring in twenty twenty-five, and whoever's in charge in the federal government level will also make some big differences in how we're going to get those federal funds and if those federal funds will even exist. Um, so it will take a lot, not just in our city, but in our community and in our greater community, our state and our nation, to secure more funding so that we could build affordable housing and then also acquire affordable housing, which is what we are looking at with this preservation fund, the twenty million and the fifteen units. That's supposed to be a start. That is supposed to be a pilot. Hopefully, we, we can get that going. Put housing in a permanently, uh, affordable station, um, that doesn't expire or have those limitations that we do in other, um, in other forms of affordable housing. So we move forward on that and we, we keep on going. Thank you.
The BAFFA fund getting polled really was a big setback. But as, um, Councilmember Ramos, um, explained so well, um, we still have to move forward. And I, um, I want to just bring up the fact that over the course of the last twenty years, while we've been building affordable housing in Mountain View, we have leveraged on an average, every dollar we have spent of Mountain View's impact funds, we have leveraged with seven dollars that we've gotten from some other source like, um, tax credits or, um, the, the housing trust and grants. So we have, um, a strong history of leveraging our money. And that's really what the idea is with the, the twenty million dollar fund. It's supposed to be the start of the fund. It's not supposed to be the end of the fund. We expect to leverage that money just as we have in the past. Um, so, uh, I think that another thing that is very important to consider is, is how do you, how you secure the funding depends a lot on whether you have, um, workers who have that skill. And in Mountain View, we have a housing department that is devoted to that. We have, um, a workforce of people who are experts at getting this really complicated funding, funding deals put together, and it is paid off well. We all don't think it's been fast enough, but it's been a lot faster than in most communities. So I just, I just want to say that, that having, um, we, we will leverage this money, will continue to leverage this money. It just will be more challenging than it would have been if the BAFFA bond had gone forward, and hopefully we just have a two-year gap. So as, um, Councilmember Ramos said, please vote for Measure G and also vote for Proposition Five. Um, and, uh, I think that we'll get through this time and, um, we'll, uh, we'll, we just have to keep on pushing forward.
Um, so as others have mentioned, I was, uh, in my last couple of years on the city council, I, um, I served on ABAIG, which is the Association of, of Bay Area Governments, and we, um, and, and that was the point at which we started moving forward on BAFFA, um, and trying to get, um, the state authorization to do that. So to see that polled at the last minute was, was deeply disappointing, um, because we waited four years, um, for that. Um, but as the mayor just mentioned, um, one key thing that we can do this cycle is approve Proposition Five in November because it lowers the threshold for parcel taxes that can fund things like affordable housing and would make it easier for us to pass the BAFFA bond in the future, um, and potentially other bonds, uh, as others have mentioned. So Prop Five was really important to pass this time. In the interim, um, getting the Measure G funds to be available and passing that major locally in Mountain View will help us here. Um, we're, uh, maintaining our pro-housing designation, uh, opens up access to hopefully additional funds, uh, from, um, from the state and others. So in the interim, we're just going to have to leverage, um, grants from you, whether it be the, 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 uh, local major grants or, or the state level, um, matching funds, uh, and tax credits to be able to fund, um, some of these projects. But please, um, please consider supporting Measure G and Proposition Five this time around. Um, and, um, because it will, um, help ensure that we have the funding necessary for all of these projects in the future. And because it will help ensure that we have the funding necessary for all of these projects in the future.
Look, my colleagues here tonight have already offered a lot of really great ideas about how to address this. I agree, Prop Five needs to get passed. Measure G needs to get passed. BAFFA, we need to bring it back in two years. We do have an excellent housing department that has been working on these complex problems. It's actually very impressive compared to a lot of cities around us, what Mountain View has been able to accomplish. But this challenge is so, so hard. I'm also really interested in the state and federal level advocacy. So for example, Senator Butler from California this spring brought forward a bill with Warnock from Georgia. It's called the Down Payment Toward Equity Act, and it was focused on aiding first-generation home buyers with their qualifying expenses to purchase their first home, including down payments, closing costs, and costs to actually reduce the interest rates, right? That's something that if passed at the federal level, could really support community members here in Mountain View. But we need to be advocating for that and supporting it within our community to get something like that in place and working with our congressional representatives, whoever that person may be from our district here, since Congresswoman Eschew is going to be retiring, to make sure they know about the needs of our specific community and are working to help us get those funds. I talk a lot with people from all over the state about the needs of our schools and our students here, and people are shocked to hear that, for example, we have a school, Castro Elementary School, where twenty percent of our children are homeless. But they need to know that. Our state, you know, assembly members and our state senators and our congressional representatives need to know what the need is and help us pull down funds to continue to support these projects.
Ah, sí, yo estoy de acuerdo de lo que han dicho muchos de los candidatos anteriores. Tenemos que pasar la medida G y también apoyar la proposición cinco. Para mí también pienso que también tenemos que apoyar reformas que para que grandes corporaciones paguen su parte justa en impuestos sobre la propiedad. Y yo pienso para esta abogación significa abogar para la reforma de la proposición trece, de modo que las empresas paguen impuestos basados al valor, del valor actual de las propiedades. Y yo pienso que esos ingresos adicionales generados por esta reforma podrían destinarse a construcciones de viviendas asequibles para nuestra comunidad, en vez de estar buscando cada vez o cada año dónde podemos encontrar estos fondos para poder construir estos edificios.
A lot of great things have been said here. I thought I would offer clarification for those of you who don't know what Prop Five is. It lowers the percentage of bond measure needs to pass down to fifty-five percent for bonds related to affordable housing and for infrastructure, down from the sixty-six percent threshold today, which is really, really high and causes a lot of bonds to fail. So please tell your friends, because it doesn't, on the surface, doesn't sound like a very exciting proposition, but we need to get this passed. And also Measure G, we need to get this passed, especially in absence of the BAFFA bond. But also, to help with that twenty million dollars that's been talked about, we need to get really smart with working with foundations, nonprofits, our corporations, and other potential funders for our housing. And that was written into the, into the plan for the community land trust. So we need to work doubly hard on those unusual partnerships for us. And I think, given that no bond measure would probably come up for two years, we, and BAFFA won't come up for two years, what other revenue sources can we tap into, even if Measure G does pass? I'm a fan of us looking at our occupancy tax. Unfortunately, that does have to go to the ballot as well. But we currently have the lowest occupancy or hotel tax of any community in our region, and we should correct that and direct money towards affordable housing.
I agree that Measure G needs to be passed. However, I'm a little bit disappointed by the recent changes that the city council made through the funding commitments in Measure G. It used to be that affordable housing was the second, to the top, the second most important priority in the way Measure G dollars were going to be spent. But unfortunately, the city council made it a third-tier priority and put parks and open space in front of affordable housing. So we need a city council that prioritizes raising the very limited money that's available and putting it to affordable housing. I'm very happy that we invested four million dollars for that community ownership model. Out of the twenty million so far, the city council has put forth and committed four million dollars for a community ownership model. And I agree that we need to leverage it with partners like the Housing Trust Fund of Silicon Valley. And we need to advocate for reform. I completely agree about passing Proposition Five, and I'm glad that Eric brought up Proposition Thirteen, which makes sure that businesses pay their fair share. I'm proud to be a field representative for Congresswoman Anna Eschew, and so I'm able to share with you a couple of federal programs that we receive money from, including the Home Program through the Department of Housing and Urban Development and the Community Development Block Grant Program. We should continue applying for funding from the state and federal government as well.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Álvaro. Yo soy jornalero de aquí de Mountain View. Mountain View ha visto un aumento en la cantidad de personas sin hogar, particularmente entre aquellos que han sido desalojados recientemente o están en riesgo de perder sus hogares debido al alto costo de vivienda en la ciudad. Citan el desalojo como una de las principales causas. Las protecciones actuales contra el desalojo brindan cierto alivio, pero las brechas en estas protecciones a menudo dejan a los más vulnerables sin estabilidad habitacional a largo plazo. Existen refugios para personas sin hogar y programas de vivienda temporal, pero estos no son suficientes para satisfacer la creciente demanda de viviendas accesibles permanentes. La pregunta es, ¿qué planes tiene para prevenir los desalojos y garantizar que las personas sin hogar y los residentes con ingresos extremadamente bajos obtengan una vivienda permanente?
Great question. I think it's extremely important that we do all we can to prevent evictions, especially evictions that lead to homelessness, because once people are homeless, it gets extremely expensive and extremely difficult to rehouse people, and in the meantime, their lives are destabilized, their children's educations are destabilized, work can become very difficult. So we need to do everything we can. During the pandemic, we did really bold, brave things as a city. We provided rental assistance that kept people in their houses throughout the pandemic. When we thought the pandemic was over, we, I think, failed to realize that the pandemic after effects, the aftershocks, were still in our community, and we need to bring back rental assistance to help people who are still on the edge, have not recovered from the pandemic economic collapse in our community. So that's one thing we need to do. We need to prevent these evictions, and we know how. We tried it during the pandemic. We did big things, and they worked. So I think we need to bring that back. I think also working in partnership with organizations like CSA, being able to provide support for first- and last-month rent, giving people some money to bridge any gaps they have if they are facing eviction due to a short-term financial issue would be extremely helpful too. Again, with the goal of preventing people from getting evicted and becoming homelessness and finding clever ways and creative ways to do that, but we also need to improve our economy and make sure people have access to stable, permanent, long-term jobs where they can count on their income and count on other benefits so that they aren't facing this month-after-month financial insecurity and not knowing if they'll have a roof over their head in the next month or in the next year. So we really need to fix some of the underlying problem as well, and we have a lot of power as a city with universal basic income and workforce development programs to help that. Thank you.
Gracias por la pregunta. Primero, yo pienso que tenemos de que fortalecer nuestras políticas en acuerdo con la protección de los inquilinos. Pienso que conforme cumplimos con eso, podemos prevenir que muchos de los residentes se pueden volver personas sin hogar. Hemos visto durante el tiempo de la pandemia cuando nosotros divertimos dinero como financiera directa y damos las familias la oportunidad de usar el dinero, no solo para pagar las rentas, sino otros bilis que existen para ellos. Podemos prevenir el desalojo más. Podemos prevenir el desalojo. Además, tenemos que trabajar que estos inquilinos sepan de los recursos legales, y nosotros como ciudad tenemos que ofrecerlos gratuitos. Yo pienso para asegurarnos que el proceso cuando una persona enfrenta un proceso de desalojo, tengan las protecciones para asegurar que es causa justa, no porque nomás quieren sacarlos. Conforme las personas sin hogar, tenemos que enfocarnos en implementar programas como Viviendo Primero, conforme trabajando con otras ciudades. Yo pienso que el problema del desalojo, los homeless, como le decimos en inglés, no es un problema nomás de la ciudad de Mountain View, sino es regional. So necesitamos invertir como una región invertir en programas donde nosotros no solo podemos apoyar en shelters o en hogares, pero también en salud mental o asistencia laboral, encontrarles un trabajo, por decir, y otros modos en cómo ver, cómo los podemos apoyarlos para que puedan volver a hacer, para que ellos se puedan mantener a sí mismos.
We first need to take, we have a housing department, and we need to probably investigate why are people getting evicted at this point? COVID is over for a few years. Is it a lingering effect? Are people not able to get jobs? So we need to look at the data to see why they're getting evicted and use, you know, then they use the resources of the Housing Rental Committee to figure out how they can help do that. And then there's the reality of securing permanent housing. What's more important? Getting these homeless and extremely low-income residents secured permanent housing? Or making, or trying to get them in Mountain View? And sometimes we're going to have to make the hard decisions that the permanent housing for them is not necessarily in Mountain View. It could be elsewhere in the region. It could be somewhere else in the state. So if we want to serve and secure the permanent housing and get these people the opportunity to get their lives going, then yes, we have to look outside of Mountain View. We may have to look outside of Santa Clara to help them get there and hope for them, and that will help solve some of the issues that we're dealing with. But we just don't have the resources or the housing to take care of everybody that we have at this time. And so that's what I think we should do.
I think, you know, Mountain View has fairly strong eviction protections, and so not to say that. So I think understanding from the Rental Housing Committee or elsewhere what the trends are here, and if folks folks aren't able to access the resources to fight some of these evictions, if they're, if they're if they're illegal, frankly. So providing additional legal assistance, access through those services as exists today, but perhaps they're not as well-known or accessible as they should be. Just ensuring that everyone understands their rights and is well-represented to the extent possible. I think working with CSA, as was mentioned previously, we I think we had a fairly successful program of rental subsidies during the pandemic. And so if we need to bring those back or expand them in some way, shape, or form, we can look at that as well as guaranteed income for a very low-income residence, the program that's in place today. But I know it's set to expire here at the end of the year. And then I think partnering with the county and the state on additional additional transitional and other housing opportunities, especially with conversions of hotels like we're, like we've started to do around the Bay Area, including in Mountain View. I think those present some opportunities to help, at least as a step to to help protect folks who are in, who are at risk of eviction or at risk of homelessness and making sure that they, making sure that we have the supply of those units that are available as opposed to having someone else on the street, because as as I Rose mentioned, you know, once someone, once someone is homeless, it gets both very expensive and very difficult to support them, and then as well as their families too. It's very destabilizing.
Alright. I could have spent my entire fifteen minutes just on this question, but I'm gonna try to keep it concise. One of the things we're looking at is the three stages of homelessness. How are we preventing evictions to prevent people from becoming homeless? How are we managing those who are sheltered and unsheltered homeless? And then how do we get people out of homelessness into permanent support, permanent housing, whether supportive or simply a low, a low rent? As we look at just evictions, we're gonna narrow it down there. We learned incredible lessons during the pandemic. This was before I was on council, but thankfully, at the same time, I was on the Rental Housing Committee during this time. And this is when we brought forth several good programs. When we realized that the, having mass evictions during the pandemic was not just detrimental to the individuals or the families, it's detrimental to the entire community, which is why we focused on preventing evictions. One of the things we did in the RHC was look at legal counsel and legal assistance, along with other supportive services to get people access to the rent relief that was available, which we should continue on. We should continue that legal counsel. What we ended up doing is that partially of the funds from the Rental Housing Committee were put in, and then the city also added in more funds to make that pot bigger for legal assistance and legal counsel. Now, what also was helpful was having everything brought into one place. When you get that eviction notice, you're not in a good state of mind. You are losing your home. It is stressful. So having one place that you can go to get all the assistance you need, whether it's legal assistance, whether it's rental assistance, whether it's other financial assistance, whether it's ability to apply for affordable housing, having that all in one place was very helpful. And that is what we currently have, our Housing Help Center, which is largely run through the Rent Stabilization Department and supported through the city as well. As we look at the causes of eviction, I think many of us understand that the main cause of eviction is that the rents are too high here. It is so high that many of us are one emergency away from losing our home. So many of us are extremely rent burdened. That means we're paying more than thirty percent of our income or even extremely rent burden, which we're paying over fifty percent of our income. You are one tragic emergency. You are one car accident. You are one car breakdown away from losing your home. And so we have to find our house, solve our housing crisis in getting more affordable housing there and providing that assistance to people who can, so that people can stay in their homes.
When there's a vacant unit in the city of Mountain View, there should be a preference for people who already live in Mountain View. There are units that sit vacant for months when there are families that could use them right now. I'm particularly focused on our vulnerable population, including I'm particularly focused on our vulnerable population, including seniors, large families and people with disabilities. If you look at the homeless population, there are disproportionate percentages of each of these vulnerable communities that make up the homeless. And we should implement a preference for Mountain View residents for vacant units. We also need to strengthen the outreach that some of my fellow candidates are talking about. The Rent Stabilization Division and the Housing Department are there to help the people in Mountain View to prevent eviction. We should continue supporting the CSA rental assistance to make sure that there's a safety net for people who are facing this very difficult situation. And we should also, if it is caused by job loss, we should also work incredibly hard to immediately match someone with a new job. The city partners with Nova Works in the city of Sunnyvale, which is an American Job Center, to help people find work. We should work with Nova Works to implement an unemployment assistance program in order to rapidly find employment for people who recently lost their jobs. I also support strengthening legal services and making sure that tenants have the ability to defend themselves.
So in the Mountain View Wisdom School District, before the pandemic, we had 175 homeless students. In the 22-23 school year, that number went up to 333. And in the last school year, the 23-24 school year, we hit that number by January. I don't have the final numbers for the entire year yet because they come from the state and we're waiting for that information to come in. But we're seeing this huge problem with our students losing their homes. And it's not just Mountain View, it's countywide. There was an article in the Mercury News lately about this. Looking at it everywhere. And so, you know, we talk about homelessness prevention. Some of, there's been great ideas discussed about that. I think some other pieces that could tie into that are basic income, getting a basic income back up and program back up and running. I think it was a lifeline, especially. You know, I know somebody who broke their ankle and wasn't able to work for six weeks and lost their home, right? It, people really are just right on the edge of not being able to stay in their homes. So basic income can be a lifeline. And California has an earned income tax credit. And if you make $30,000 or less, you can qualify for that earned income tax credit. It can be anywhere from $3,000 to $7,000 for the previous year. And so the city should be helping connect households who are in need to a free service or a way to apply for the earned income tax credit because that might be that piggy bank of money that helps them get through a crisis or emergency or meet their food or housing needs for the month. And then when we look at what happens when you are homeless in our community, there's hardly any shelter spaces, especially for families. So I have founded a group with school board trustees from across the county as part of the Santa Clara County School Boards Association that is focused on our unhoused children and their needs and also preventing families from losing their housing who are right on that edge. We've been visiting shelters and talking with the Office of Supportive Housing at the county level. And what we're learning is that if you're a family and you lose your home, you are on a waitlist for at least five months just to get into a shelter. That's not even transitional housing. That's just to get into a shelter. There's a new shelter that's, a shelter that's being converted in Sunnyvale. It was a congregate setting shelter. So it was kind of everyone, it's being converted to a family shelter by the county and it's kind of undergoing that transition right now. They're taking a year to do it. But it's still going to be a drop in the bucket. It's not going to meet the needs of the 330 kids we already have who don't have stable housing in our school district. So I think the city has to work with the county on advocating around those shelter spaces. They need to work with the schools frankly. We're opening a center called the Spark Center at the end of this month that is going to be specifically for our unhoused families and students to come and get support and get connected to resources. And, and we need to add transitional housing. Once Crestview is open, we need to look at what's the occupancy rate and are, do we have the case management services? Not only with our safe parking lots, for example, and our shelters to move people into housing. But do we also have that for our transitional housing sites like Crestview? So that we have a pipeline to housing and it's not just a place that people get stuck and can't keep moving out of.
This is a, a subject that people can talk for hours and hours about. And I've been glad to hear some of the really good suggestions. One of the things I think that is positive is that the president of the Board of Supervisor, Susan Ellenberg, is very concerned about this problem. And she has been having some research done about what is the cost of saving people from becoming homeless? And especially how can we compare that to the cost of supporting people when they are homeless? And it turns out that it looks like if you can provide somebody with several months' rent on an average, you know, to get through a crisis, that actually works. We certainly found that was very important in our own example during Covid. But, but there were also a lot of people who fell through the cracks because they went ahead and borrowed money to pay their rents. And the, and the federal subsidy was for rental payments. So they couldn't get money back to pay off loans to relatives and that sort of thing. They, they, they were kind of stuck. So that was where the ingenuity of our Hispanic leaders, the Fondo Solidarity came into play. They, they knew the people in the community that needed help and, and essentially what kind of help they needed and they were able to get some funds to start with to do that from one of the people that they had met in their Spanish Leadership Academy. And then it was such a successful program that they were able to come to the city of Mountain View and say, could you give us money for that? And we, we were happy to do that because they had demonstrated what a good job that they could do. And how the, the, sometimes the flexibility of government programs isn't adequate to really meet the needs and people that are on the ground in the community are able to tell better how things work. Another thing I wanted to mention again is Nova Works. That is a successful a successful project that's been going on for decades. And I myself used it when I needed to get back to work after staying home for many years with kids. It's very, very helpful for people. And we have the library, the Help Center, the Housing Help Center in our library. Every other Saturday, I think, I think it is. Is that right Emily? Is it every other Saturday?
It changes.
It changes. Okay. Anyway, we have, we have the Health Center that's available on a regular basis, but you can always call the, the staff members at the city of Mountain View if something happens in the interim and you really need help in between. So I think that, that providing people with, with this knowledge of the system and, and connections to the help that's available, legal assistance, all of these things, it's just vitally important. And we need to continue to do that. And also we need to listen to what people's needs are because undoubtedly they will change and we need to be flexible and respond to that when those changes occur. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lucy. I am a member of the Mountain Dependents Coalition. And overcrowding is a serious issue in Mountain View. As multiple families are often forced to share a single housing unit due to the lack of affordable housing. Current zoning laws do not accommodate this reality, which leaves many families living in technically illegal arrangements. These shared living situations often arise out of necessity as families cannot afford individual housing units. The demand of alternative housing models such as community or corporate housing reflects the need of more flexible housing options. Despite this, despite this, it affords cities current regulations to make it difficult to implement these types of solutions on a larger scale. The question is, would you support the creation of community housing? And how do you propose to address the current situation where multiple families share a single unit?
Great. It looks like I'm going first. So I do support the creation of community housing. It is part of our plan for community ownership, a community-led ownership models such as CLT, CDCs. We have, we have talked about this in plenty of the questions before. Now, how do we propose to address the current situation of multiple families sharing a single family housing unit? One of the things we do want to make sure of is that people are in safe and stable housing. The overcrowdedness does provide an issue for that. But it's not something we should treat as a hard and fast rule. We should prioritize whether families are stably housed. It is better that they're in overcrowded housing than out on the streets. I think we all agree on that. So we should look at our, our building codes and our zoning codes in a more people-centric lens for our community and find ways to, we're looking at this with our true right of first return upon demolition. So when housing units are demolished and they get replaced with a one-for-one requirement, how do we address that overcrowdness? And we still, we just, we're still finding more solutions to that. And I think it is just focusing on the human element of the way our zoning codes are.
Thank you for the question. Yes, I'm a huge fan of the community-owned housing models in all of their forms and varieties. I think we should do all we can to fund them. It's a great way to preserve naturally affordable housing and renovate it to make it safe. Potentially also renovate it to make it more family-friendly, like more bedrooms, larger units. But I also like the idea of seeing if we could create collaborative and cooperative housing as well. So imagine a development, like an apartment complex where people have their house, but the kitchen isn't, their, their living area, but the kitchen is in a common area. And you know, childcare is in a common area and there can be space for people to get together. So technically each apartment could be smaller and still house a, a family, but families can work together in cooperative situations to do things like the cooking. As for the crowded space, I believe we need to treat residents who need to double and triple up in apartments with as much grace as possible while we are finding some longer-term solutions.
I do support the development of community housing. I think the city is focused on helping families buy their first home. And we need to be serious about putting our money where our mouth is and leveraging funding sources so that families can purchase a unit. And when we invest in an affordable housing project, we can work with nonprofit developers to build larger units within those buildings. It's really important that we focus on that because large families, like I mentioned earlier, are a vulnerable part of our community. So it's important that we require that in the projects that we work with. And we also need to increase the stock of housing as a whole so that it's viable for developers to build larger units. So I, I look to the Below Market Rate Housing Program, which I mentioned earlier, and requiring that more of those units be affordable. What a lot of people don't know is that there's a Below Market Rate Ownership Program too. It's not just a Below Market Rate Rental Program. And those BMR ownership units are more likely to be bigger. We need to expand the BMR ownership units in order to accommodate larger families.
So I, I do support exploring and developing community housing. There are models out there that I think have been successful in various cities and they, these I, there was a peak of interest, I think, in the last, you know, just before the pandemic. I remember reading about a number of these models and and I think it, it sounds like, as Councilmember Ramos mentioned, that it's already, you know, part of our, our action plan or at least something to be looked at. So, so I do support that. I think the current situation, there's, you know, a two-pronged approach. I think one is, you know, with, with enforcement of, of the existing rules, you know, as, as as Commissioner Sylvester said, like we can, we can show some grace there, but, but ultimately at the end of the day, people's safety is incredibly important. And, you know, in an extremely overcrowded situation, you're putting at risk not just the, that particular family or the families in that unit, but also the other families within that complex. And so there's a, there's a balance to be struck with respect to safety, whether it be for fires or, or natural disasters or other things. Where we just want to make sure that there's, that, that everyone is, is, is safe, but enforcing things within reason. I think the other prong to that is looking at, I, I think there are probably evolutions in, in codes in California and elsewhere where cities have experimented with this and, and hopefully done some of the legwork for us. And I think it's important. Mountain View has done a really good job, both, both leading on a number of fronts, but also learning from the best practices of other communities. And I think this is one of the areas where we can learn the best practices of others and, and adopt any modifications that we think might make the best sense for our particular community in this case.
I don't have a lot of time left on the clock, so I'm just going to say yes. This is part of our community, our, our housing action plan, which I supported. And I look forward to working on it and making it happen in reality.
I definitely support community housing. I'm probably going to blow up my time. When I first started teaching back in 2002, I was in San Francisco. I did, and I've always done home visits with my students. So I go to their families' homes to learn more about them. I went to one of my students' homes, Amadeos. His family had fled Guatemala during social unrest and they had come here to try and have a wonderful future for their children. They had Amadeos, who was a kindergarten in my class. And then they also had a newborn baby. And I went to their home and there were three families living in a two-room apartment. And they were so proud and so thankful to be in a safe place after everything they had experienced. And their hopes and dreams for their child are the same hopes and dreams that I have my, for my own child, children. And these are all our children. And I talked earlier about the students who are considered homeless in our school district. There's a difference between how the county defines homelessness and offers shelter spaces and what schools do. We fall under the McKinney-Vento Act, which is a federal act. So if a child, if a family is doubled up or couch surfing or in an overcrowded situation, they qualify for all of these special protections and services, including case management with our school community engagement facilitators to help meet their needs and get them into a more stable housing situation. We need to be doing that level of case management for our families who are in overcrowded settings, not waiting for them to be out on the street. And you're really vulnerable if you're in that position because you're not, there are many families who aren't on the lease, right? So they could have somebody who's on the lease in the, in the property who might be extorting them for money or doing other things. Because those, those tenants aren't actually on the lease and they don't have access to all of the tenant displacement protections and they don't have access to all of the tenant displacement protections and other services that we have in the city. So I think this is a real gap in our service model that we need to evaluate and fill in as a city. There's also ideas that I've seen, there's an organization called PadSplit that was started by one of my classmates in college and it's in Atlanta. And the idea is that it's not just affordable housing, but you can rent just the room in a shared home with other people or other families. And so that's a more kind of flexible and creative approach and it meets all of the guidelines about safety, but it makes it possible when we're trying to support low-income households to get into a stable setting.
You know, I keep hearing most of the questions say, "current situation." And every time I see "current situation" with ideas being proposed today, we're talking years. Now, I do support the creation of community housing and how to address it. Well, maybe we start renting homes that will accommodate more people. The city, we've got to change the mindset of administrations and people to say, okay, if you're always thinking of apartments, that's not going to do it. We've got to start going outside the, the normal way of thinking and put in, what homes can we rent? Is there an area that we can accommodate all these people? I know landlords, if they start hearing about, oh, we're, they're putting a bunch of families in there, you know, where there's a concern that they're violating their lease, there's fire hazard codes and there's danger to those there, and we don't want to do that. We don't want to put anybody, anybody into a risk of danger. One program that I was thinking about, if we bought, and I keep going back, this is something that can be done relatively quicker than anything else that's been talked about. If we buy these apartments, we can turn them into condos. There's condo conversions and so for, then we have more flexibility to put multifamilies in and we also opportunity for those people to do the entry-level home purchase. And that will hopefully get these multifamilies out and opportunities go. So let's think bold, let's think outside the box. Let's look at renting housing. There's housing out there that's available. It's expensive. But the cost of somebody displaced is going to cost us more than the rent of the house and we can't accommodate keeping families together. And I think it would be a better step going forward because we'll get more bang for the buck if we start doing these type of projects where we look outside, get housing or get condos, that we could buy the condos and it works better. Now, we did have a below-market housing project and it was pretty small and a lot of people think it didn't work. I think we've got to change the way we think and get bold.
Okay, gracias por la pregunta. Soy yo. Como muchos han dicho, yo sí apoyo la creación de las viviendas comunitarias. Como también ha dicho la concejal Ramos, está en el plan de vivienda comunitaria y pienso que una forma que el nuevo concejal tiene que enfocarse es cómo vamos a implementar ese plan. Es bien importante asegurarnos que la gente viva en un hogar en vez de estar en la calle. Y yo pienso que una de las formas que podemos hacer esto es asegurarnos que podemos expandir el plan de unidades de vivienda accesorias permitiendo que los propietarios puedan añadir más unidades atrás de su, en el espacio que ellos tienen, en el terreno que tienen ellos para aliviar, que tantas familias puedan estar en un lugar mismo. También, sí, eso es todo lo que tengo. Gracias.
All right, do you see, you want to take this? Or Mark?
All right, so right now we've reached the portion of audience participation, Zoom question and answer. We have been fielding a few questions from the audience. We'll get to a few of them or however much we may have time for recognizing with each candidate. Obviously, eventually your time will be expiring. But let me bring up one of the questions. One, one particular audience member asked the following question. What strategies will you use to hold developers to their word or accountable when community benefits, they promised to get projects to move forward, are eliminated at the last moment because their guarantees didn't quote pencil out? In other words, how, how do you, what strategies will you use to hold developers accountable to their word?
Sorry, I didn't see the timer. I was trying to find it on my screen. I think, I feel like we were asked this question in another forum recently as well. You know, part of this is about the policymaking levers of city council versus what kind of staff do in implementing that policy. And I watched this happen when we saw Google downshift on their inclusionary housing that they had in the plan. It was brought to council after the fact. It was brought as something that had been negotiated by city staff with, with Google in development and, and presented as part of an overall package deal that the council had to vote up or down on. That very much felt like staff making policy instead of implementing the policies that were set by council. So I think one of these pieces is being very clear and holding staff accountable for when council sets a policy around inclusionary housing or other types of affordable housing and projects or other community benefits. That's a policy that staff can't negotiate away. It needs to be maintained. And if there are challenges to implementation, then it needs to be brought back to council to be discussed if we need to adjust our policy.
Sorry, didn't see the bar there either. It would be great if we could hold developers accountable upfront by making them put money, you know, bond, bond them and hold them accountable financially for their community benefits. Probably not a legal idea. So, but it's a thought, right? How can we enforce what they do? With that said, the number one tool we have is most developers want to do business with our city repeatedly over the years and most do. Not allowing them to come back, not allowing them good provisions in their next attempt when they come back to develop and making it even harder for them to get their plans approved in the future is a way. As long as they know that upfront and that's, it is a stated policy that you need to hold yourself honest and accountable for your community benefits, or we will not make this easy for you next time and you will not be as welcome in our city going forward. It's a tough stance, but I think we've been afraid to take one like that and I think we should start trying.
I agree with much of what Devin and Ida Rose brought up. Thank you very much. I think that when it gets to be those difficult situations, we have to make sure that it's not an all or nothing. We can't just let developers take away all of their community benefits. We need to have secondary and third-round conversations to make sure we keep what's most important to the city. And we need to be ready to pursue legal action if consequence is serious enough and is going to fundamentally shape our community. And I'll reiterate what Ida Rose said, that we should make sure that the continued relationship with the City of Mountain View is dependent on good business practices.
So I think there are two categories here. So there's, there are developments that fall within, you know, our, our hard and fast rules, regulations, requirements for below-market-rate housing or other things. And those are hard and fast rules. And so, you know, they either need to adhere to those, maybe, maybe there are some minor exceptions with setbacks or other things to, you know, save a tree or I don't know what it is. But, but, you know, those are situations where I think we, you know, we, 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 we take a pretty firm stance. I think when you're referring to community benefits, what you're talking about are projects that, where we're freely negotiating a development agreement, where we believe that there's, you know, significant value to be added to the city for a particular development. Maybe we're getting a lot of additional affordable housing. And then the incentive structures are really important as well as the economic cycle. And I think what you're starting to see now is, you know, we used to be in a position where we could require a whole slew of community benefits and they would make good on them as we saw in a number of projects during the boom period. What we're starting to see now is that, you know, things genuinely don't pencil. And yes, sometimes you have to have been around the block enough to know when something does or doesn't pencil and, and when, you know, there, it's more of a negotiating position than anything else. But I do believe that, you know, in those situations, we have to step back and say, is it better to make some concessions and have a project in affordable housing at the end of the day? Or is it better to take a firm and hard stance and just understand the project isn't going to happen and we have to wait for the next economic cycle? So those are the, the sorts of things that a council member has to take into consideration. It isn't as simple as just saying, you know, well, they're backing out on their community benefits, so we have to take a really hard stance there. These are like freely negotiated situations that are outside the typical code.
I can think of two ways to try to get developers to honor their agreements. One, of course, is put a major cost bond out there that if they don't do it, they pay a penalty and we keep it. The second is maybe not give them a certificate of occupancy that says, you're not going to, if you're not going to do this, we're going to put this certificate on hold until you figure out a solution that's what we expected. And the other one is sometime, I think the council does need to play a little more hardball. If developers, I've been doing planning for five years and council for eight. I've seen where developers are starting to feel that they have the control because the city wants housing at all costs. And they're willing to gamble, say, well, we just can't do, those 300 units doesn't pencil out, even though this particular company is sitting on a boatload of cash. Sometimes the council's just going to have to say, this is what we want, this is what you agreed to and hold to it. I have not seen many developers pull out of a project. They always seem to find a way to make it work. And if they're spending that much time to come to Mountain View, they can figure out something to do. So sometime I think the council needs to sit down and say, what do you think, council? No, you need to do it. And they'll say, well, the project's dead. And we go, okay, that's your choice. You decided to change, but this is what we want. And you'll see that you won't, you'll probably get a better results than you think you're going to get.
Thank you. I don't have a lot of time left. But as we look at what former Mayor Clark was mentioning, there are different types of projects. There are ones that fit within our existing zoning code and then there are ones that are seeking variances in those zoning codes. And that's generally where we see our community benefits. One thing we can look at is providing an easier way to calculate and simplify our community benefits so that we know what we're trading off for each of them. State law has limited on how, how much flexibility we have, particularly with housing, because we are in a housing crisis. And so as we, to hold developers accountable, we have to look at all those levers of simpler community benefits and be willing to say no when, when it's not, not matching our priorities.
Gracias por la pregunta. So yo pienso que cuando estamos haciendo estos contratos tenemos que trabajar con nuestros abogados en decir que cuando estamos formando este contrato que los acuerdos son claros, que si ellos no cumplen con algo van a ser penalizados económicamente para poder terminar este proyecto. También yo estaría dispuesto a crear. Yo pienso que tenemos que crear un fondo de garantía o como un depósito como cada nosotros que alquilamos, alquilamos en un apartamento. Sabemos que cuando nosotros no cumplimos con nuestro contrato, nos quitan de nuestro depósito para cubrir los costos para reparar esas cosas. Yo pienso con los desarrolladores tenemos que hacer lo mismo, que cuando ellos no cumplen con algo, nosotros tenemos un depósito, un fondo que ellos pusieron su propio dinero en para poder terminar ese proyecto. Y para poder, más bien es para que ellos, para prevenir que ellos, de, de un modo u otro se saquen del, del acuerdo que tenemos y no se cumpla lo que habíamos estado de acuerdo en. Y también pienso que cuando estamos dando, dando estos desarrolladores beneficios, también es exigir que ustedes no pueden recibir este, estos beneficios solo hasta que se cumpla este proyecto. Si no, si no lo cumplen pues no van a, no van a recibir estos beneficios. Yo pienso que tenemos que ser más forzantes en estas cosas porque los que sufren no son ellos, sino son nuestras comunidad. Y estamos viendo esto ya a lo largo plazo, ya de muchos años, más de diez años con otros concejales anteriores que han visto que vivienda ha sido un, algo que tenemos que cumplir con para que la gente no se desplace, pero estamos aquí en estos tiempos y están viendo los resultados por no siendo tan forzante con esto.
Well, it seems like everybody has talked a lot about community benefits related to affordable housing, which is certainly an important, important category of them. But another community benefit that I think hasn't worked well in the last decade or so has been when we've required ground for retail in office buildings. And we have some places where the, the ground floor has been vacant for five, six years, maybe seven years. And it doesn't look like there's really anything going in there. And that is a big problem. So I think in that case, part of the issue was maybe what we were asking for in the first place wasn't reasonable. And, or because the, the landscape of commercial retail has really changed. I mean, we are buying so much on the internet and going to brick and mortar stores so infrequently that these, you know, that there are, these retail spaces are not being filled. That said, I think going forward, we need to make it clear if we want the retail spaces there that it's the obligation of the tenant, I mean, the obligation of the owner to make sure that they subsidize retail activities there so that they do go forward. And that's what we've heard from several developers in the last year or two, and I think that's an improvement. Thank you.
All right, I see.
So we are running out of time. We want to respect everyone's time right now, especially with the candidates. Do you have any final words you want to say to the public before we close?
Well, I was cautious with my time, so I would take the whole four minutes I have left. No, I won't, I promise. I want to thank everybody for organizing this wonderful and extremely insightful discussion. It felt much more like a discussion than a typical forum. So thank you for sparking ideas and really holding us, holding us accountable for our ideas. I appreciate that very much. A couple of things. I did see a question in the chat that I thought was really interesting about how, how and why, or why not? Why, why are candidates reaching out to people of color more in this process? And I want to apologize for any role I have in that too. I have, I do have walkers who speak Spanish and are talking to Spanish-speaking voters, trying as best as we can to reach people because no one answers the door anymore. So it's really difficult, but we're trying. We are also doing some other specialized outreach to the Spanish-speaking community. And I hosted a bilingual meet and greet as well. So we're trying and I would love to talk to more people in the community in any way that I can. I'm not ignoring that I can. I'm not ignoring people of color in any way. But I'm always open to help reaching out and talking to people one on one. So renters make up 60% of Mountain View's population, and this is an incredibly important population for us to address. I have the endorsement of the California Democratic Party Renters Council, which I'm very proud of because I do center the voices of all of our residents and our renter residents in my policies and in my philosophy. So I want to thank you all for highlighting your ideas and your concerns tonight. I've taken multiple pages of notes. And with that said, buenas tardes, gracias por todo, and thank you.
I also have appreciated this discussion. It's been quite different from the other ones we've had, and that's refreshing. I have a pretty near perfect record on voting for housing projects. The only one I didn't support was the Rock Street one, and that was because it was going to produce fewer units that were being demolished. Housing is very, very important to me, and I hope that I will be able to continue to champion housing on the Mountain View City Council in the years to come. I'm the only engineer running, and I think that that technical expertise is also valid and helpful. Thank you so much for this, and I hope to see you on the campaign trail.
Thank you so much for having me tonight. I apologize again for arriving late after my school board meeting. I didn't get to introduce myself at the beginning, so I'll take a little stab at that now. I'm running for city council because I believe that family friendly city planning benefits not just children and families, but all of Mountain View. And I want to make sure that our children and families here are thriving. Because when we look at the future of Mountain View, 30, 40, 50 years from now, what we do currently to support families, to keep them housed, to keep them supported in our school district, to keep their needs met overall, it's going to pay off 30, 40, 50, it's years from now, it's going to pay off for the next generation. And again, thank you for your time. I'd love to speak with anyone who's interested at devinconley.com.
So thank you, everyone, for hosting this tonight. The questions are really good, as others mentioned. These are, you know, much different questions than we typically get, which I think is great. As I mentioned earlier, I've worked on housing for over 10 years now, and including when it wasn't nearly as popular as it is now to build housing. And I took some arrows at the time, but I'm really proud of the work that I did both in Mountain View to increase the number of affordable housing units, as well as regionally, as we talked about earlier, trying to get BAFFA off the ground. So thank you all for hosting this forum tonight, getting to know us. And I hope you'll consider supporting me, Chris Clark, at electchrisclark.com. Good night.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to talk about these issues. I remember working with the Tenants Coalition way back in the days of Measure V, meeting in places like St. Athanasius and St. Joseph's Church, finding out what can we do to prevent people from losing their homes. I sat in support with you all when we showed up to council and spent over two hours in non-agenda's public comments to say, please do something about it. And when we did the impossible and passed Measure V, I was honored to serve on the RHC and where I fought to implement this law to the will and to the spirit of the voters wanted. Thanks to that work, I also gained your support to join the council, and I hope to continue that work with all of you today. Thank you.
Gracias a todos por tomar este tiempo para estar aquí con nosotros y más bien gracias por su liderazgo porque por ustedes la comunidad latina tiene las protecciones que tenemos aquí como inquilinos. Mountain View está en un momento crucial y las decisiones que tomamos este 5 de noviembre definirán el futuro de nuestra ciudad. Y mi enfoque es crear una comunidad más inclusiva, sostenible y vibrante, donde todos, sin importar su origen o nivel de ingresos, tengan la oportunidad de prosperar aquí. Estoy comprometido a luchar para viviendas asequibles, abordar las crisis de las personas sin hogar y asegurar que nuestra ciudad siga siendo accesible para todos nuestros residentes. So otra vez gracias por la oportunidad para hablar con ustedes y ojalá que pueda contar con su apoyo. Buenas noches.
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody that attended. I'd like to point out that I'm the only businessperson that has personal knowledge of the Latino workforce. I hire Latinos to work at my store. I have Latinos that patronize my store, which I greatly appreciate. And I understand the workforce housing is so important. Now, my solution may be a little more bold than what people are thinking about, but as buying the properties, we don't have to buy a big, a bunch of large complexes. We can start with an apex or whatever. But I know how important that housing is for my business and the success of the rest of this Mountain View. We are dependent on the Latino workforce to make Mountain View survive and be vibrant and contribute to the quality of life for those all involved. So I thank you for my ability to participate and my deep sincere appreciation for all the work for me that attend to my business and make Mountain View the great city it is.
Estoy muy agradecido a ustedes por participar esta noche y también al centro de jornaleros de Mountain View y la coalición de inquilinos. Yo soy un inquilino y soy latino. Yo estoy muy orgulloso de vivir en el vecindario de Rangstorf, que es una de las áreas con más inquilinos que cualquier parte de la ciudad. Y es sumamente importante que nosotros hagamos preguntas que son difíciles de nuestros líderes elegidos. La contabilidad es lo más importante en una democracia. Y eso es porque mi moto, la razón que yo estoy lanzándome como candidato es que juntos tenemos éxito. Yo creo que la mejor política se forma cuando todos tienen un papel en su formación. Y yo voy a ser dedicado, yo estoy dedicado a asegurarme que la voz de todos se escuche. Estoy muy orgulloso que mi sitio de la red que compartirá es en inglés e en español. Entonces espero que todos pueden visitar el sitio y analizar mis políticas. Yo creo que tengo raíces muy profundas en nuestra comunidad. Yo estudié en la escuela de Saint Francis y como niño siempre estaba yendo a McKelvey Park para ver a mi hermano jugar béisbol. Yo tengo una experiencia profesional que no se puede comparar. Yo trabajo para la congresista Anna Ashu, incluyendo en temas de vivienda. Y yo tengo experiencia en abogar para los residentes de Mountain View para tratar de combatir el costo alto de vivir. Y hoy trabajo muy cercanamente con la comunidad para crear mi política, para hacer un impacto inmediato en el consejo municipal. Ojalá que tenga su apoyo y muchas gracias otra vez por participar.
And with this week comes to the end of our forum, I want to once again thank all of the candidates for their time, our audience for their active participation, and everyone who made this event possible. Your commitment to the community is evident, and these kinds of dialogues are crucial to ensuring we make an informed decision in the upcoming elections. Remember, every bill counts, and this is an opportunity to make our voices heard and work together for a fairer and more inclusive Mountain View. Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye bye. Thank you. Thank you.